All right, we are almost ready to go. Scott, anything else we're waiting on?
No, sir. We are good to go. We are live, sir.
Very good. It looks like we're recording as well. Just a reminder, as we do roll call in just a couple of minutes to make sure you have your video on. All right, we'll roll. Welcome, everyone, to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council. I'd like to welcome everyone. Today is September 15th, 2020. Due to the continuing coronavirus pandemic, our meeting is again being held via the Zoom platform. Meetings will be livestreamed to the City of Burlington's YouTube page at youtube.com/COBNC. And please note that this meeting is being recorded. If anyone has having any technical or connection difficulties, please contact our public information specialist, John Vernon, at 336-513-5440 for support. For tonight's public comments and to address City Council at this meeting, please indicate that you wish to do so by using the raise hand feature in Zoom or star nine if you're joining us by phone. And you'll that will notify our moderators that you wish to speak at the appropriate time. We do have a number of public comment or items on the agenda and our final public comment period. So please make sure you do that at the appropriate time that you wish to make your comments. If you do have any issues with connecting, you can contact John Vernon at the number again, 336-513-440. As a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Ian Baltutis, and I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on this agenda are present and can hear me. Members present when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hikes.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Harold Owen.
Here.
DAF participants, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. City Manager Harden Watkins.
Here.
City Attorney David Huffman.
Here.
Interim City Clerk Beverly Smith. I heard you Beverly, but I don't think we got you over Zoom.
Here, I'm present.
Assistant City Manager Nolan Kirkman.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Rachel Kelly.
Yes.
Director of Finance and Risk Management Peggy Reese.
Yeah.
Director of Planning and Transportation Mike Nun.
Here.
Principal Planner and Long Range Planning David Beal.
Here.
Economic Development Downtown Manager Sarah Beth Hardy.
Here.
And Economic Development Director Peter Bishop.
Here.
Very good. Thank you, everyone, for your help with that. At this time, we'll turn to Councilmember Jim Butler for our invocation.
Let's pray. Fathers, we gather this evening to to meet as an elected body. We ask for your guidance and your direction over our meeting and the decisions that we make. Father, may these decisions be based on sound judgment and research, and may these decisions be made in the best interests of all in the City of Burlington. Since early this year, we've all struggled with the impact of COVID-19. It has wreaked havoc on our country through sickness and through loss of life, through disruption and economic uncertainty. However, Lord, we know that you're in control and that this too shall pass. Please be with those that are impacted by the virus and continue to be impacted and comfort those who have lost loved ones. We're also ever mindful of the unrest throughout our country. Most recently, the tragic shooting of two Los Angeles police officers this past weekend. Lord, this shows not only the danger our officers face each and every day, but the vicious and violent actions of those criminally minded individuals and what can be can be done. Please lay your hand upon those sworn to protect us through law and order. Please bless and guide these individuals and their daily activities. Look over them and provide them comfort. And Father, in the Book of Proverbs, it is said that many are the plans in a person's heart, but it is the Lord's purpose that prevails. Give us faith, Lord, in these difficult times to trust and know that your purpose is omnipotent and it will prevail. For it is in your name, I pray these things, Lord. Amen.
Amen. We have a very timely special guest this evening. I'd like to recognize Alaman's County Board of Elections Director Kathy Holland. Kathy, thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Baltutis. I'd like to start out by you. Councilmember Butler during his invocation spoke about COVID and things that are happening with COVID. And because of that, we have had some changes at the Board of Elections. We have partnered with ABSS, and we have moved several polling locations so that we can further social distance our voters. We have moved Albright, which was primarily was at the Mount Herman Community Center. That polling site will now be at Southern High School in their lobby. The Boone Five Precinct, which was at Antioch Community Church, will now be at the gorgeous new Elon Elementary School. We will be moving the Hall River Civic Center polling place to Hall River Elementary School. Altamaha Oscepee Community Center, which is the Morton Precinct, will be moved to Western Middle School. North Melville, which is was at the North, the North Melville Fire Department, will be moved to E.M. Yoder School. And the last one is Bethany Presbyterian, which is South Graham, will be moved to South Graham Elementary School. So this will give us a total of 14 schools on Election Day. So that helps us in several ways, and I'm going to mention that in that we're trying to not only hold a presidential election, which is an enormous task, but also ensure the safety of our voters and our precinct officials. So moving into larger areas where we can social distance was definitely a consideration, and we partnered with ABSS, and we will have their cleaning facility, their cleaning team on site to do post-election cleaning. They will clean on Election Day, and then they will clean afterwards. And that is going to be the protocol at every polling place, but we have collaborated with them to have them do that task for us at the schools, which takes a tremendous burden off of the Alaman's County Board of Elections right now. So we're very, very appreciative of that. But I'd like to talk about some of the things that we're going to be doing for voter safety. And one thing will be site sanitizing, which I just mentioned. Then voters are encouraged to wear their masks, just like they are, you know, any anywhere else. And if the voter forgets their mask, then we will have one available and provide it to them. We will provide hand sanitizer. Voters will be given single-use pens. And these are going to serve as their "I voted" stickers. Now, we know I voted stickers are really big, but just at this point, you know, we're trying to eliminate anything that's touched multiple times as much as we can. So we will give the single-use pens, and they will serve multiple purposes. And that will be as the "I voted" sticker gift to the voter and also for using to sign their ATV forms, whether it's at early voting or at Election Day at the at the voting site. Now, if you'll recall, at early voting, we use the ballot marking device, which is the express vote. So voters will be given a cutie to use as a stylus to activate their markings on the ballot marking device. And on Election Day, the single-use pens will be used to mark the paper ballot. We will also be six-foot distancing. We will not be queuing inside of polling locations, if that makes sense. We're going to queue outside. That way, there's open air and certainly more distance in most places. But if you go by and there's a line, don't assume that the line is that long. It's going to be socially distanced, so that's going to make it look long. So don't be discouraged. Hop in the line and come vote. You know, we're preparing. We're preparing the way. I would say on that note, to be mindful to not just look at the early voting dates at in the beginning and the end. Keep in mind the dates in between, when maybe the sites aren't as busy. So that will maybe keep the lines down, too. Another thing that is maybe concerning to some people is we will have no paper sample ballots. Because it's been our experience that people come in, they use their sample ballot, and they put it back on the table, which we have always encouraged because we encourage recycling paper. But with the virus, we're not doing that. We're going to make big, huge posters of sample ballots to put on the walls in all the polling places. So we're excited about being able to provide it in that way. And we're going to try at every polling place where it's possible to have separate exits and entrances. And if that's not possible at a facility, then we will have designated areas where you go in and go out with a petition in between. So those, that's what we're doing for our voters. Now, for the election workers, and we're still recruiting election workers. So if you if you're interested, you know, still keep putting in your applications on the Board of Elections website. But for election workers, we're going to have workstations that are six feet apart and socially distanced markers in front of the stations that are six feet. We're going to have sneeze guards and barriers where they're where the job tasks allow. In other words, if you're activating a voting, a piece of voting equipment, we can't have a portable sneeze guard. So we're going to have, we're going to provide full PPE for that. We've worked with emergency management. The State Board of Elections has secured RFPs to get us all of the things that we need. We're going to have masks, gloves, face shields, disinfectant wipes, hand sanitizers, and gowns will be provided for workers who go out to the cars for curbside voting. So the six-foot distancing practice when activating the voting equipment, we'll we'll try to do that as well. That's probably going to be the most challenging part of the whole process. But we're going to do our best to plan so that the voter and the voting equipment activating person are not as close as they have been in the past. Early voting workers will have their temperature checked each day. They will also be given the standard COVID health assessment test like you get when you go anywhere to the hospital or anything else. And if a worker has any kind of symptoms, if they're symptomatic, they will be sent home and will have plenty of hand washing supplies and encourage that to be done at regular intervals throughout the day. So I'm not sure if that's what you had in mind, but I wanted to let everybody know that because it's on everyone's mind. As our poll workers call in to tell us whether or not they're working, we're explaining that to everyone. So I feel like it's on the voters' minds, wanting to know about the safety of their polling locations and the early voting sites. So about the voting opportunities in Alaman's County, we're very excited. Like I said, you know, moving the polling places was the to schools was good. We've also moved a polling place from Holly Hill Baptist Church, which is central Boone. We have moved that polling place to Trinity Worship Center. And that's a larger facility, and it gives easy access in and out. And we have also split one polling place this season, and that is South Melville Precinct. South Melville was split to make Melville Four, which South Melville was definitely our largest precinct. It was held at Meven Arts and Community Center. That precinct is still intact. It just has about a fourth less voters. So eventually, our goal will be to split that even more to half it off, and so it'll really be a better situation for our voters. So for our voting opportunities, at this point, we're doing mail-in absentee ballots. We started on September the 4th. We mailed out over 10,000 ballots. We actually did not get our absentee envelopes until Wednesday, the second at 3:40. So it was a challenge to get them mailed out, but we hired a lot of people. We worked a lot of people, a lot of hours, and the mailroom got us finished, and we had most of the ballots mailed out. The complication in that was we budded up to a Labor Day three-week, three-day weekend. So ballots are still coming, so don't discount that if you got your, if you ordered or requested your absentee ballot earlier in the month, if it hasn't come yet, you know, it's they're still, you know, having time to go through and and get to you. We're having some instances of people in the same household getting their ballots on different days, but they are getting there. So so be mindful that they will get there. And if they don't, give us a call and we'll look into it. Now, that absentee by mail goes through October the 27th. That's the last day that we can take a request. If you have your absentee ballot and you want to track your ballot, there is a new system on the State Board of Elections website. You can Google State Board of Elections North Carolina Ballot Tracker, or you can go to North Carolina, all one word, dot ballot, B-A-L-L-O-T-T-R-A-X dot net backslash voter backslash, and that will track your ballot. It's where I had gotten several emails today, and you know, if you're in public service, sometimes you don't get the most positive response. And we have had a really good response on it. It really warms our heart to hear people speaking positively and knowing that things are happening in a positive manner. So we're excited about that. We have early voting hours, more early voting hours than we have ever had in Alaman's County and probably in North Carolina as well. In Alaman's County, we are going to be voting beginning, early voting beginning October the 15th. And that will, we will vote, which is a Thursday, we'll vote Thursday and Friday of that week from 8 until 7:30, which are mandated hours. And then we will vote on Saturday, which will be from 9 until 4, Saturday the 17th. Sunday, October the 18th, from 1 until 4. And the 19th through the 23rd will be the standard Monday through Friday, 8 to 7:30 p.m. hours. Then we'll be open again on Saturday, a full Saturday, from 8 a.m. until 6 p.m. Then we'll go through the next week again with the 8 to 7:30 hours. And the last day will be October the 31st. And that will be from 8 a.m. until 3 p.m. So we're very excited about those hours. We're excited for that to get going. We have a new site. We're going to be voting at Elmira Community Center. We're going to be voting at Kurt Nodel Senior Center. Holly Hill Mall, we're still going to be voting in the mall, but there's a change in the store location. We're going to be directly across the hall, if you will, from where we have been in a little bit larger store. Again, it has where the one store we were in had one exit. This has two doors in and out, so we're separating voters. And then we will also be at the Alaman's County Annex Building, our traditional in lieu of site, and the Meven Arts and Community Center. And this year, instead of the Meven Arts and Community Center Civic Room, the smaller room, we are in the gym. And that's a huge area. So we are really encouraging people to go to Meven and taking some of their sites. Sorry, City of Burlington, but you are providing us two wonderful sites, and we thank you for that. We've worked well with getting our data connection up and going, and everything's going well. Oh, I have my deputy director on the phone to talk about return ballot process. If you'd like to hear anything about that, just didn't know how much information you wanted. I can talk for days.
I think this is very helpful. We appreciate that. If you want to talk a little about the return ballot, that'd be good.
Okay, can you can you select to let Dawn in? Can the host select to let Dawn in? Dawn Hurdle.
I see her in. So Dawn or Scott, if you could unmute. There we go.
Am I there?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, um, the state has a really nice new portal for requesting absentee ballots. If anybody hasn't had the opportunity to go on the State Board of Elections website, you can actually request your ballot online, sign it, and everything. It comes directly to our office. They transmit every two hours. That website is votebymail.nc sbegov. And you would just click on the the portal, request an absentee ballot. And it's also military and overseas voters have access to that as well. And once the request has reached our office and we reviewed all the data for the voter and the date of birth, the name, their ID that they have provided, which would either be a North Carolina driver's license number or the last four digits of your social security number. Once that all validates, then they're eligible to have a ballot mailed to them at the mail-in address that they provide. And so we'll mail the ballot out, and the voter receives their ballot. They will vote their ballot with a witness. The voter would then return the ballot. There is an envelope that comes in their packet that requires the ballot to be returned in. And that has a special it's provided with the postal service that they can scan on the label to so that the voter can follow their ballot through ballot tracks in that in which Kathy had spoken about earlier. That way, they they'll know when their ballot is at the post office. They can, once they have mailed their ballot back to us, they can track, still track it till it is received in our office. The what's required to return the ballot is on the envelope. It requires the voter's signature and a voter's witness that have to sign. The witness has to sign, put their address, and print their name in order for the ballot to be a valid returned ballot. Or do you have any questions about that process?
And that's that's links up with what Kathy was talking about with the ballot tracks.
That's correct. The ballot tracks will track your ballot, but to request the ballot, you can go onto the portal on the State Board of Elections website. Or we also, you can come into our office. We have request forms here. And there's request forms that if you don't have access to a computer, we can mail you one. You can call our office, and we would mail you a request form.
And which steps on the ballot tracks are people able to view, obviously, the transit back to the Board of Elections? But are folks able to see when the ballot's been processed as well?
You know, I have not actually used it, so I'm not sure. And Kathy, do you know how the tracking?
I haven't done it either. I haven't applied for it. I think I will do it, so you can send me a ballot, and I can track it.
I know one of the girls that worked here lives, she works part-time here. She did it, and it told her when she was getting her ballot. She should receive it in, you know, so many days. Now, she hasn't returned it yet, so we're not sure how, what it will tell you as far as once the Board of Elections Office actually has it back into the office. I think it does notify you that it's been received, but I'm not sure if it tells you that if it's that that has been validated yet.
Okay. And that's a question I've gotten from the public already.
I think that it must, just from the feedback that we're getting through the emails, because people are saying that they know the process is being completed, so I think it must.
Okay, that's great.
So one other thing, Ian, I didn't, Mayor Baltus, I did not, I did not mention was our early, our election day hours are 6:30 in the morning till 7:30. All election day sites are still open. So that's something that the public has kind of been misinformed about, that this year, because of COVID, that they either have to get a mail-in ballot, or they have to vote early. Election Day is still in play. We're still having all of our our sites open. And I'd like to mention also about the process of returning your ballot. If you want to return it to the Board of Elections Office, we have set up a tent in front of the office where you just drive up and get out of the car, fill out your log, and give us your ballot if you don't want to mail it.
Great. We appreciate Kathy, you and Dawn joining us. Council, any questions for Board of Elections team?
Kathy, can we can we trick or trade on Halloween at the early voting sites?
We will be expecting you to bring us candy. I think we'll need some sugar by then.
I just wanted to make sure.
We thank you for the invitation and the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
No problem. We recognize there's a lot of changes going on, a lot of hard work on your behalf of your team. On behalf of my wife and myself, we both got our early ballots, our mail-in ballots the first day. So you all were working really hard to get those out. I've heard a lot of folks in the community appreciate the speed and promptness that you all have been able to do things at. And I particularly appreciate the early voting hours. I know a lot of folks have had feedback about wanting extended hours so they can get home from commute to Raleigh or work and make sure they have time to vote early. So that's very helpful. We appreciate your team's work. Council, any other questions? All right. Well, Kathy, Dawn, thanks again for joining us.
Thank you for having us.
And keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda, we have a report to council from Burlington Downtown Corporation with their annual report. At this time, I'd like to recognize BDC Board President Coleman Rich and Downtown Manager Sarah Beth Hardy. Welcome.
Mayor. Mayor.
Coleman, are those your only words?
Oh, no, no, not, not, no. We appreciate that. We appreciate this. I'm sorry.
I know you all have an exciting report, so I hope you.
We do. We do. Sarah Beth has worked hard, and I reviewed it today, and it's it is a fantastic report she's going to give. And we appreciate all the work that Sarah Beth has done. She came in at the in January and became interim director, and she did just a fantastic job keeping keeping things running downtown, keeping contact with the merchants and and also our committees. And so we really look forward to to working with Sarah Beth in her new capacity. And I think that Sarah Beth, I'm going to let you, I'm not going to steal your thunder, but it's very exciting what has what has happened in the downtown area this year under very unusual circumstances. And it's the foresight of the people who are involved in developing the downtown and creating new opportunities is is just amazing, and we're very excited. And a year from now, I think that that we'll just see an explosion in the downtown area in terms of new venues and new opportunities. So so Sarah Beth, I'm going to just be quiet and let you speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Coleman, and thank you to council. And I know that we probably have some other board members either logged in or watching online. So shout out to the BDC Board. Thanks for your support tonight. I am going to share my screen. Let's see. Is that working? Yes.
Yes.
One second.
All right, you can see that.
Okay. So I do want everyone to keep in mind, this is a fiscal year in your report. So tonight, we'll get to talk about a lot of the fun things that happened in 2019, back in the old days when we could hold events and have fun. We're still having fun, but in a different way. So I'm going to start with some of our data. So the BDC surveys are municipal service district business and property owners annually. So these numbers were collected in July for the 2019-20 fiscal year. So they do take into account some of the impacts and changes that businesses felt after the start.
that businesses felt after the start of COVID-19. So we had 10 new business, businesses open in the district this year. Three that closed or moved out of the district, so for a net of seven new businesses. I'm really proud of these jobs numbers that you see. So 60 full-time and 15 part-time net jobs added in the MSD this year. So the National On Demand Headquarters and Burlington Beer Works were two of the leaders in adding jobs this year. We also have a robust group of volunteers that logged over 600 volunteer hours this year between meetings and events and different downtown projects. And so that's a value of over $15,000 in volunteer time this year. So our, our property saw a lot of improvements this year. We had multiple businesses that did facade improvements. So they either got a new awning or a new sign. You'll also see that we had, for example, some refreshing changes at the blend and at occasions. Those are examples of where some business owners took advantage of the downtime that was given to them, handed to them when they needed to close or have limited hours. Took advantage of that time and made improvements to their spaces that are absolutely beautiful. Our small grants program this year had an absolute banner year. So $90,000 in committed grant dollars, which leveraged, as you see, a ton of private investment. So as you know, that's a matching program. So whatever the BDC is putting in, the business or property owner is putting in double, usually much more. So we've committed this year to five different projects. Four are still in progress and you'll see more about some of those later in the presentation. So those grant dollars are really spurring some major investment and we're seeing some movement in some buildings that have been quiet for a while. And so that's really exciting. We've moved to a quarterly application process and have had applicants in every process. People that are just really excited about leveraging those grant dollars. And so they're having a really big impact. So of course, there are always ongoing efforts by the BDC to make the MSD a more beautiful and clean place to visit. So these are two examples from the past year. We were so lucky to have Mauricio Ramirez come and complete a mural on the back of the Bellas House building. I know that he really enjoyed his time here. It was so fun to host him. He just had nothing but good things to say about Burlington. And so we celebrated the completion of that mural and the prospect of more public art and more engaging community art in downtown in November. So Mauricio was here. We had a great event upstairs at Burlington Beer Works and actually raised over $11,000 between tickets and some of our interactive arts, silent auctions and different things, sponsorships for future, future murals. So we have two sites identified and hope to have those murals complete by the end of 2020. Another huge accomplishment in a true partnership effort was this past year, we finally were able to implement a new MSD trash and recycling plan. So this is something that's been talked about for several years, five maybe, needing to get those rolling trash carts off of the sidewalks in downtown for multiple reasons. And so all of our thanks to Al and Chris and Public Works and our wonderful design committee that really just engaged our property and business owners to make a solution that worked for everyone. So that was implemented and now you walk around and it's as if those cans were never there. It's awesome. So speaking of partnerships, we were just so thrilled last year to be able to partner with Elon University and V-Town Events to put on the inaugural Phoenix Fourth Friday event. It was wildly successful. We had over 3,000 people. So that was Elon students, their families, local alumni, faculty, staff and Burlington community members that came to celebrate downtown turned maroon and gold for the evening. It was just such a sight to see. The streets were just buzzing and our MSD businesses really welcomed them and a lot of, welcomed our Elon family with a lot of unique sales and events. And it was just such a glimpse that I saw into a wonderful partnership and a wonderful thing that we hope will grow. Of course, we are not continuing a second year of the tradition this year, but hope to pick it right up again in 2021 because it was great. We saw some amazing merchant-led efforts for the promotion of downtown this year. So Tracy Schmidt, who's one of our board members and her team at Burlington Beer Works, organized the Fourth Friday Art Walk Series, which was just a way to sort of activate downtown during those Fourth Fridays that didn't have programming from V-Town Events. And really it was perfect timing. What better timing? They started in February, kicked off with a wonderful event and then have continued on as a really safe way for people to come and enjoy art from the sidewalks and see live art taking place. So it's been something that could still happen in a creative way. Burlington Beer Works also worked with the BDC Promotion Committee to curate a community event calendar for downtown, which again was long awaited, something that we need desperately is for people to have one place where they can go and find out what's happening in downtown. Of course, we always have fun at the holidays with Small Business Saturday and our holiday promotions, window decorating contests, a community tree. So those were successful in 2019. We had a great time and are already thinking of some creative ways to activate storefronts, do funds scavenger hunts and things like that later this fall so that we can still have a great holiday season in downtown. So this spring, we celebrated success in several areas through the Main Street America Program. So for one, we met the standards for national accreditation as a Main Street community. Yay. The KMAC Building won a North Carolina Main Street Award for Best Adaptive Reuse. So Impact Elements and LabCorp and the other partners that helped to bring that building back to life into what it is today, which is an amazing conference and meeting space for downtown. They were recognized at the North Carolina Main Street Conference in New Bern. And it was just a really cool thing to see that project get recognized because it was an absolute win for downtown as we know, but it was cool to see it recognized on a state level. Also at the conference, we celebrated Bob and Kathy Hikes as our Main Street Champions. And it was just, as you can see in the photo, we had a very large contingent there to honor Kathy, but also to honor the legacy that Bob left for downtown. It was a happy day and just such a fitting award for the hikes. And so congratulations again to Councilwoman Hikes. I wanted to recognize again our full BDC Board of Directors, which includes an advisory board and also some executive members that just serve as an invaluable resource to the BDC. And as you can see, we have a pretty large group of community volunteers that serve on committees and task forces to work on more specific projects. And this has just been such an engaged team this year. They moved to meeting virtually, just like you have, and really pressed forward with project work in a very responsive way. So I'm just so thankful for this group that we had this year because they were able to say, okay, what do we need to pause on? What are some of the things that we can leave for now? What do we need to pick up? What, what do we need to do? And then to just press forward on other projects. So it was an encouraging year. So that team that I just mentioned of our board and committee members, we're just integral in the BDC's response to the challenges that came this year. So our board and committees put their heads together to come up with creative ways to assist our business owners and engage downtown customers. The business landscape was just changing so quickly. And so the BDC served as a resource for our business owners to share out local resources, statewide resources through Main Street. That was a great, great wealth of information that we were able to share this spring and have continued to. We launched a social media campaign to encourage our community to shop small. Created a virtual tip jar for our downtown workers that were forced to close or work limited hours. Our Economic Vitality Committee came up with the idea to do a small business owner webinar. We partnered with the Alamance Chamber and were able to open that webinar to all of our local downtowns. So we had 50 participants. We did a panel discussion and a Q and A and just got great feedback about how wonderful it was for them to just see and talk to each other as they navigated the different changes this year. So we definitely plan to do that again. And of course, another great success that we saw this year was when council approved to have the street closures on the weekends for the Burlington Beer Works patio. What a huge win for downtown. And I know it has just been such a wonderful part of their, you know, coming back from, from everything that's happened. So what I've seen this year, from my view, is just such a resilient business community and also a loyal group of downtown customers. So everyone quickly adapted and we've had a really positive and impactful year in downtown. So it's all looking good from where I sit. There's a lot of hope. I've just given a look back on the past year. And so now I want to take a look forward at what's coming for downtown with the video that you're about to see. What I hope that you'll glean from this video is that there's something really unique happening in downtown right now and that it's that we have a group of Alamance County natives that are using their passion and creative energy to put back into downtown all of those things that they loved when they were young to be able to have this be a special place for the next generation. And so I hope that you'll enjoy our video.
Most communities depend on their downtown for that heartbeat and for that life and that heart is down here for a reason.
It's the environment. It's that it's everybody's place that brings the creativity and the excitement.
Once you're into downtown, you feel the vibe, you feel the energy. You kind of get excited and want to just commit all you can to downtown.
There's opportunity to create community, cultivate a culture here and utilize these buildings that are existing.
There's a feeling that comes with it. There's a connection to the past, the present and the future that we see in our downtowns and it's the only place we find it.
Downtown has a lot to offer. You know, I don't think I could have done what I do anywhere else.
Our downtown still has a ways to go to catch up. And I believe that we are on the trajectory to become a destination as more of these businesses continue to open.
I'm Emily Lewis. We own Beechwood Family Properties and also Beechwood Metal Works. We recently purchased three properties downtown and we're hoping to revitalize this block.
I'm Casey Lewis and the buildings that we're doing, one we put our gallery in, which is Allen Rabbit. And the one we're in right now is going to be Carolina Sundry's, which is going to be a general store. And the bank is in progress right now and we have someone interested in putting something in there right now.
For us, it was just kind of a leap of faith. We saw good results with Allen Rabbit when we were on Front Street. And that was also a leap of faith, just hey, let's try this for a year and see if people enjoy this store. Well, they did. And they have followed us down to Spring Street, which is great.
And in fact, it's up 30% from last year.
Yeah, our sales are up, which is great. And it kind of gives us a little bit of encouragement for moving forward with our other projects. And we wanted to curate these three buildings. Whatever we put in here is going to hopefully be a substantial building block for everything spreading out from it. And, you know, be an anchor for this block to connect with that block, to connect with the others and help people move around downtown and draw people to the different corners.
My name is Eloise Letley. I've been in business here for 23 years, be 24 in February.
On occasion, it's downtown Burlington. When you describe occasion, you're always saying downtown Burlington. It's country restaurant slash soul food buffet. We're averaging about 400 to 500 on Friday nights. Downtown Burlington has really done well for me. I feel like it's building. It's, you know, new shops and everything is always opening up downtown. So hopefully that'll bring people, you know, to their shops and they'll say, oh, that's occasions. I've heard about occasions and so we are enhancing each other.
Brandon Martin with Epic Construction. Our concept is to renovate existing historic buildings into residential homes. The ground floor is going to be a commercial space. I'm just a fan of construction and buildings in general. The exposed brick, the craftsmanship that was in these buildings 100-plus years ago, the beams that are solid wood beams, really just the historic ambiance. There's plenty of growth in downtown. There's plenty of construction on each corner, I think, at this current state. We've got a couple of other buildings that we're very interested in. We're going to continue to make spaces for commercial entrepreneurs, residential living, to get more people in the downtown environment.
I'm Wellesley Robinson. I have Core Properties and Development in downtown Burlington. And we are a company that focuses on urban revitalization and we focus on breathing life into historic properties. So this is going to be the food hall, which is a local food court. The front is going to be Go Burrito. They will offer a bar and a great family and community-centered environment. Then we'll have four other smaller kiosks in the back, which will share a commissary kitchen that can serve for local chefs, caterers, food trucks, outside of just the food hall. The four kiosks that we have right now are the hibachi, Japanese. We have a salad bar. We have desserts and we have a sandwich shop. So we have some pretty great, you know, places to come in and they complement each other and they complement what we have in downtown now. A rising tide floats all boats, right? So in downtown, that's 100% what we see is its community growth. So if the food hall does well, that will support other businesses downtown and likewise. So we are in mid-construction of Tanner's Wine Bar. It's a little bit more upscale. It's a special destination, but also can cater to while you're waiting on a table, happy hour, things of that nature. So we're excited to bring a new experience, we think, to Alamance County.
This is a great place, more intimate, to grab a glass of wine, have light bites and then we'll have a wider selection of desserts.
I feel like with Tanner's, we're taking the door open as far as pushing. I think, you know, and I think it'll be fun and vibrant and it'll definitely have a certain feel. And I think Burlington honestly is ready for it and wants it and needs it. For people to dwell in a community, there has to be these destination points to feed into lifestyle and the way we live. And what's super cool, especially now that been here, you know, being here for five years, but now that Tracy's here with the beer works, we're starting to see a really established community. And that's becoming really fun and close-knit. And it's exciting to see how Tanner's could be an extra place for that community to enjoy.
It's been kind of incredible because over the last couple of weeks, somebody did purchase Front Street Bottle Shop. The mini dingo is going to be coming in. And so this seems to be more of like a restaurant row, like a mini restaurant row that is starting to develop here. We're hoping this gives people more of a draw of like, oh, there's more than one thing I can do in the evening whenever we go downtown. And, and I do believe that business inspires business. So hopefully, once this happens, maybe eventually we'll be able to recruit an entertainment venue, another fine dining restaurant.
Tracy and I are just advocates for growth and, you know, everyone benefits everyone. We're really excited. We're really excited about the other bars that are opening and the other restaurants and, and we hope to all play into one another.
So does anyone have any questions for me? And thank you to John Vernon for helping me put that together and for all of our, our folks that agreed to be on camera. We were excited about that. Any questions?
Thanks, Serbeth. It was a great video wrap up. Council, any questions?
Just comment. It's amazing work, Serbeth. It looks wonderful. I love the enthusiasm on the part of the people who spoke in that video. That's what it takes.
Serbeth, I think, I think street seating should be perpetual. We should now do that forever.
Yeah, I agree. For anyone who's, who's been out there and sat on a Friday or Saturday night, you sure wish that it was permanent and.
It's, it's a lot of fun. I've really enjoyed it. Thank y'all for coming up with that.
Any other questions or comments?
Coleman, let me, let me certainly thank you for your volunteer efforts and your leadership on the board. Excuse me also. Obviously, this, this seems to have more momentum than I can ever recall in downtown. So thank you and all your fellow board members, what y'all done.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Harold. I appreciate that. I, it, it, it's not me. It is, it's those board members and, and, and you saw a, a group of them who are on the board and they've just kind of taken the lead and they've run with it. And what an exciting video. And I, and I tell you, a year from now, things are just going to be, it's going to be rocking down there. We, we, we need that entertainment video down near the mayor's bookstore down in that area. We'll just, we'll, we'll rock the block come next summer.
Very good. Well, we appreciate your work. So now that everybody keeps commenting, we need more music downtown. So if you've got any ideas, let us know how council can help support that. But it's good to see the momentum, good to see how everyone's building together and we appreciate your work.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. All right, we'll move to the more formal parts of our meeting. At this time, we'll recognize our interim city clerk, Beverly Smith.
Good evening, council. Members of council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
None.
None.
All right, before council, our minutes from June 16th, city council meeting, the July 6th city council work session, the July 7th city council meeting and the July 21st city council meeting. Do I hear a motion and second to approve those?
I move.
Second.
Motion from council member Ward, seconded by council member Owen. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 With a hand raised too on that one. So thank you very much. All those opposed, motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Protam Hikes and council members Ward, Butler and Owen. Next, we have an addition to the consent agenda. Item G, Budget Amendment 2021 dash five, Old Burlington Solid Waste Landfill Project to Increase Task 2A for Phase 1. Do I hear a motion and second to approve this addition to the consent agenda?
Move the addition to the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion to approve from Mayor Protam Hikes, seconded by council member Butler. Any questions regarding the motion to approve this addition? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Protam Hikes and council members Ward, Butler and Owen. Next, we have the agenda with the addition. Do I hear a motion and second to approve the agenda with the addition?
So make a motion to approve with the addition, item G.
Second.
Motion to approve from council member Butler, seconded by Mayor Protam Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Protam Hikes and council members Ward, Butler and Owen. Next, we move to our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about them, please let us know. Item A, to adopt an ordinance approving the following traffic commission recommendations. Number one, install a high vis crosswalk and associated pedestrian crossing signage on West Davis Street on the southeast approach at the intersection of West Davis Street and Tarleton Avenue. Item two, install a no parking anytime signs along the south side of Cleveland Avenue from Belmont Street to the terminus of Cleveland Avenue. Item three, to reduce the speed limit from 35 miles an hour to 25 miles per hour on Haley Long Lane from Christopher Drive to the terminus of Haley Long Lane. Item four, to install stop signs on Washington Street approaches at the intersection of Washington Street and South St. John Street to convert this intersection to an all-way stop. And item five, to install stop signs at 38 unsigned and unsignaled intersections currently operating under two-way stop conditions with no stop sign in the field. Item B, to accept bids for the 2020-13 Greason Road waterline replacement and award a contract to Ralph Hodge Construction Co., Inc., contingent upon meeting insurance and bond legal requirements. Item C, to adopt a proposed ordinance revision to Article 6 Personnel System, Chapter 2, Division 6, Leave Program, Section 2 through 261, Basic Calculations of Sick and Vacation Leave to be Effective January 9th, 2021. Item D, to approve a proposed letter and of support to Kevin, Dr. Kevin Cherry of the State Historic Preservation Office for the Denzel Menagerie Carousel's retention on the National Historic Register of Historic Places through and after its relocation to the new Carousel House in City Park's amusement area and authorize the mayor to complete the chief executive official recommendation for the property to be submitted for listing in the register. Item E, to approve the 2020 fee schedule, proposed changes for Burlington Athletic Stadium rental fees. Item F, to approve Budget Amendment 2021-6 CARES Act Grant Project Ordinance to establish a revenue fund for CARES Act monies that have been allocated to the city of Burlington by Alamance County for the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget. Item G, to approve Budget Amendment 2021-5 to increase Task 2A for Phase 1 of the remediation plan for the old city of Burlington Solid Waste Landfill. Do I hear a motion to approve and second this consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda, mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion to approve from council member Ward, seconded by Mayor Protam Hikes. Any question regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Protam Hikes and council members Ward, Butler and Owen. Next, we begin our public hearings. The first public hearing, item number one, public hearing has been set to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the lease and use agreement between the city of Burlington and Burlington Baseball Club, Inc. This time, I'd like to recognize Assistant City Manager Rachel Kelly.
Hey, good evening. Before you tonight, we have a consideration to approve a use, a lease and use agreement for the Burlington Athletic Stadium. And that's with Burlington Baseball Club, Inc. This is the same group that's been providing minor league baseball to the Burlington community for, for decades now and done a great job. We've had a really nice partnership with them and providing that entertainment to our community. As this contract neared its end, at the end of 2020, we, we began preparing to negotiate a new contract. We actually have new ownership for Burlington Baseball Club, Inc., same organization, new owner, Mr. Ryan Kerr. And he's with us tonight and will certainly say a few words about his plans for the future at Burlington Athletic Stadium. So there's been a lot of uncertainty with minor league baseball and I know you've heard a lot of that. I'm sure Ryan will address it, but this lease, as you'll notice, also addresses the uncertainty that's been surrounding minor league baseball. But I think we've got great baseball to look forward to in the future through this use and lease agreement. On the technical side, this, this lease was advertised in July for a September 1st public hearing, which council rescheduled to today, the 15th. So it has been properly advertised and it's ready to be executed after a public hearing. We've got Ryan Kerr with us and there, there he is, I see his video. I'll pass it over to him to, to give an introduction about Burlington Baseball Club, Inc. and his plans for Burlington Athletic Stadium.
Thanks, Rachel. And thanks, thanks, council. Hope everyone's in good health and in good spirits. And it seems like just yesterday, I guess it was now six months ago, we were all together in City Hall and was talking about re-energizing the team and all the exciting plans that we had for, for the 2020 season. And obviously didn't get to bring all of those to fruition. But throughout these last six months, I think the one thing that really has never waned is our enthusiasm and our commitment to the city of Burlington, to our fans and to kind of the next era of baseball in, in Burlington. So obviously, as, as Rachel reiterated, Burlington and baseball have been synonymous for summer traditions for, you know, nearly 35 years. And there's so many memories and being able to hear from so many people recently who missed baseball this summer in Burlington, really, I think, was, was meaningful to us because we're in the memory-making business. And to hear all those folks that had their first job at Burlington Athletic Stadium, whether it was with the Burlington Indians or the Burlington Royals, and they missed that this summer. And we're obviously so excited at some point, you know, in the next year or so to, to continuous math with mass gatherings. But we're excited about the partnership. And so these last six months have been different for sure. And I'm really proud of the efforts between Burlington Baseball, the city of Burlington, its leaders, the Appalachian League on where we stand today. I think six months ago, you know, we were fairly uncertain in terms of what our future looked like. But in a partnership with Major League Baseball and USA Baseball, I'm really proud of where we stand right now and what the future looks like, not just on a local level, but how Burlington fits into just the global world of how baseball continues to grow and prosper. And I think the persistence of the city leadership and the alignment that we had with city leadership and, and the Appalachian League throughout this process has led us to a really, really favorable outcome that we're all going to be super excited with and, and released here in the next coming weeks. So forgive me if I've told you this, you know, this story before. But as I think about, you know, what a lease means to having, you know, access to Burlington Athletic Stadium and what we see our vision looks like, I thought about that. And, you know, a couple of days ago, we're thinking about the 19th anniversary of 9/11. And for me, growing up in New Jersey, 9/11 was a really, really life-changing event. And I, I've told this before, I was in sixth grade dance class and I am still one of the world's worst dancers. But as I sat there in sixth grade dance class and a lot of our students and kids were starting to get removed from class, I thought people were in trouble and it was really just that their family members had worked in the city and luckily weren't all that affected. But we went home at a half day and that evening, myself, my family and about 7,000 other members went to our, our local ballpark. And that was where the vigil was held. That was the community gathering place. And so when I think of Burlington Athletic Stadium and when I think of, you know, we want to provide for our community and for the city of Burlington is a community gathering place. And so for us and to see the level of commitment that, you know, council has provided to the stadium, for me now 10 years ago, for where it's progressed is nothing short of amazing. And I just want you guys to understand that that's the sort of level of commitment that we'll provide to our fans, to our constituents and, and to the city as really utilizing Burlington Athletic Stadium as this community gathering place, as the prime best place for, for summer affordable entertainment, but also as a catalyst for hopefully future growth in, in East Burlington and really seeing, you know, how we can attract people to Burlington Athletic Stadium 365 days a year as that prime form of, of entertainment. So thank you so much for, for the allowing us to partner with you and continuing this, this amazing partnership. We're beyond excited about what the future looks like and, and at some point, hopefully, being able to, to fill the stands at Burlington Athletic Stadium again.
Thank you, Ryan. All right, this is a public hearing. Any council questions before we begin the public hearing? Rachel, anything else you wanted to add? All right. So this is a public hearing. At this time, if anyone joining us wishes to comment regarding the lease and use agreement, you may do so, please use the raise hand feature or star nine on your phone. If you're having any connection difficulties, you can contact John Vernon at 336-513-5440 for support. We'll take just a moment to let folks chime in. Again, if you wish to make a public comment regarding item one, the lease and use agreement with Burlington Baseball Club, please use the raise hand or star nine feature. All right, it looks like we have no indicated public comment. Counsel, do I have a motion to close public hearing along with a second?
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close by council member Butler, seconded by council member Owen. All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Protam Hikes and council members Ward, Butler and Owen. Any council comments or questions at this time or do I hear a motion?
Mayor, if there's no comments or questions, I'd be glad to make the motion to adopt a resolution authorizing a lease and use agreement between the city of Burlington and Burlington Baseball Incorporated.
Second.
All right, motion to approve this lease and use agreement by council member Owen, seconded by council member Butler. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Protam Hikes and council members Ward, Butler and Owen. Rachel and Ryan, thank you very much for joining us. Ryan, thank you always for your advocacy and being a champion for baseball here in our community. We're excited to see what, what comes next for our beautiful ballpark. We know it's in good hands with you.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Ryan.
All right, next we move to item two on our agenda. Public hearing has been set to consider adopting an annexation ordinance to extend the corporate city limits of Burlington for 0 and 1450 Hanford Road, contiguous voluntary annexation requests effective 11:59 PM, September 15th, 2020. And this time, I'd like to recognize our principal planner and of long-range planning, David Beal.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council. I'll, I'll start a presentation for you tonight. This is a public hearing for voluntary annexation request. It's two parcels listed as 0 and 1450 Hanford Road. Just one moment.
Like we have that screen up?
Okay. As you'll see, it is contiguous. There's a small sliver of a parcel that is off of Hanford Road and runs parallel to Old Coach. That makes it and the neighboring property contiguous with the request. This request was presented at work session August 17th. A valid petition has been received and certified. A public hearing is necessary to act on the request and a resolution fixing the date of public hearing was adopted at the Tuesday, August 18th, Consent Agenda, part of the regular city council meeting. The public hearing for tonight was properly advertised on August 26th of 2020. This is two parcels, one request and same ownership, and it's approximately 92 acres. It is a standalone voluntary contiguous annexation request. Most requests are associated with either utilities or development in progress. This is standalone. It simply will, will check an item off of the owner's to-do list. Voluntary contiguous annexation does not require the city to provide additional extensions of utilities unless it is a distressed area, and that's not the case here. The existing conditions on both properties are used in calculating the estimated revenues and expenditures. So the current Alamance County tax valuation of $455,857 would bring in estimated Burlington tax revenue of $2,722.83 per year. The first year of that, we would anticipate a net gain, a net revenue of $1,568.88 and that is less a fixed cost payment to the EM Holt Volunteer Fire Department and also regular sanitation charges. After the first year, subsequent yearly net gains are anticipated at $2,262.3 and that's to cover the fixed costs of sanitation. There were no variables of police or fire calls used in this equation. And I would like to point out that Lee Bryant here, Lee Bryant is here with us tonight as, as Representative. as as representative of the owners. He is with Evans Engineering, could answer any questions that council may have. It is a public hearing. Staff is available to answer any questions, and staff would recommend approval of the annexation request.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any council questions before we begin the public hearing? All right. This is a public hearing for item number two on our agenda, which is the annexation ordinance. If anyone in attendance wishes to speak at this time, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or star nine on your phone. If you do need assistance, you can contact John Vernon at 336-513-5440 for support. We'll take just a moment for folks to notify that they wish to speak if they wish to do so on this item number two on the agenda. All right, looks like we have no request for public comment at this time. Do I hear a motion from council to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to close public hearing from Councilmember Owen, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. This time, any council questions or comments, or do I hear a motion from council?
May I make a motion? We adopt the annexation ordinance.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion to approve and adopt the annexation ordinance from Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All right, all those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Thank you, David. We appreciate you being here as well as the owners.
Thank you.
All right, item three on our agenda. Public hearing has been set to consider an application to rezone from Light Industrial District to General Business District. The property is located at 2307 Eric Lane, referenced as Almonds County Tax Identification Number 120491. This time, I'd like to recognize Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike Knut.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We'll share my screen, and we will look at a location map if I can share the screen. There we go. To get everyone oriented where the parcel is located. This is a parcel on Eric Lane. Here, there's the interstate, Almonds Road. You have, this is the former Bob Evans Restaurant from many years ago. This is the JR Outlet facility, and you have the Home Depot and the Food Line Plaza, 85 Plaza, located over opposite of the interstate. The request is to rezon from Light Industrial to a General Business District. It's, of course, located at 2307 Eric Lane. It is a traditional rezoning, meaning there's no conditions or other development standards with this and would allow all uses within the General Business District. It is contiguous to existing general business. You see that in the the red pink color. This is the hatched location of the site and is located within a commercially developed area, which makes the request consistent with a comprehensive plan and compatible with the uses in the surrounding area. Staff recommends approval of the request, as did the Plan and Zoning Commission at their August 24, 2020, meeting. Mr. John Burton is here to present additional information for the for the request, and I'm available to answer questions if you have them as well.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Burton, is there anything else you'd like to add before we begin?
No, I think general business, general business, a rezon would just give us more options to to lease the building that we're trying to buy. So that's basically the only reason we're doing it to give us more versatility, to, you know, have more options for tenants. But right now, we can't even put a restaurant in it if we wanted to because it doesn't have a drive-through. So that would be a problem as well. So if we can get it passed for general business, it would sure help the us to buy the building and and put, you know, potential business there.
Very good. Thank you. All right, any council questions before we begin public hearing? All right, this is the public hearing for item three. That is the request to rezon from Light Industrial to General Business District. If anyone in attendance wishes to speak, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or star nine on your phone. Again, if you have any difficulty connecting, you can call John Vernon at 336-513-5440. Public hearing for item three on our agenda. Take just a moment to let anyone chime in if they wish to do so. All right, it looks like we have no public comment requests. Do I hear a motion from council to close public hearing?
Make motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close public hearing from Councilmember Butler, seconded by Councilmember Ward. All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. At this time, do I hear any further council questions or comments? Or do I hear a council motion? We'll indicate that council has been provided with staff recommended motions on the yellow sheet they've been provided. Do I hear a motion from council?
Mayor, I'll make a motion. I move we approve the request to rezon from Light Industrial District to General Business property located at 2307 Eric Lane, referenced as Almonds County Tax Identification Number 120491. This motion is based upon the consistency of proposed rezoning with comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in Section 4 Land Use of the Comprehensive Plan calls for the area to be a regional commercial, it calls to be regional commercial with commercial uses. The request is compatible with the adjacent General Business District also. I move that the action is reasonable and in the public interest and that the comprehensive plan calls this area to be regional commercial with commercial uses. And then, obviously, the request is compatible with existing zoning and land uses of the area.
Thank you. Do I hear a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, motion to approve from Councilmember Owen, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion of consistency to approve? All right, all those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Thank you, Mike, for your presentation. And John Burton, thank you so much for joining us, and we look forward to future development on the site.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our regular agenda items. At this time, our meeting will move to the public comment period. Public comments were emailed to city council at thepubliccomments@berlinconnc.gov email address, and were accepted up until 5:00 PM today. Those comments will be read into the record by our clerk in just a few minutes. Comments can also be made during the meeting using the raise hand feature in Zoom and star nine on your phone. You can, let's see. If you do have any questions, you can contact John Vernon at the number, which I'll provide yet again, So this time, if you do wish to speak, please use the raise hand feature or star nine in Zoom. Beverly, do we have any comments to read into the record?
Yes, Mayor, we do. So city council received seven public comments via email. We have in attendance tonight Molly Whitlatch, who I believe is now raising a hand. So you may want to address her public comment.
This time, we'll recognize Molly Whitlatch for a public comment. Molly, if you could, state your name and address for the public record.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Molly Whitlatch. My husband Jonathan and I live at 912 West Davis Street in Burlington. I did submit a comment regarding the proposed discussion of a chicken, allowing chickens within city limits. And I offered to read my comment to the council because it's a matter of importance to me. So backyard chickens, I think, would be beneficial to the Burlington community for a number of reasons. They offer fresh, locally sourced eggs that can be organic or non-GMO. They can help to provide food security to low-income families. And this is particularly important right now during the COVID-19 crisis where there's food shortages and unemployment. Backyard chickens produce healthier eggs compared to store-bought eggs. They create high-quality fertilizer. They help control flies and other pests. They dispose of weeds and chicken scraps that would otherwise go into the landfill. And they provide a way for children to learn about nature, agriculture, and caring for animals. I've seen a lot of discussion about this issue, and there's some common misconceptions that I also wanted to address about backyard chickens. The first one is the misconception that they're noisy. They're not. Chickens will peep and cluck softly throughout the day, but they are silent at night. If you don't have roosters, which I understand wouldn't be part of the consideration of this council, then there wouldn't be very much noise. The second misconception is that chickens smell bad, and a small flock of four to five chickens would create about as much waste as the average dog. And chicken coops do not smell bad if they're kept properly cleaned. The third misconception is that a rooster is required for chickens to lay eggs. And this is also untrue. The only reason that a rooster would be required is for reproduction, but a hen does not need a rooster to produce eggs. And I think that's one of the main concerns. I grew up with a small flock of backyard chickens, and we didn't have any of these problems. Many of the communities surrounding Burlington allow chickens with appropriate limitations, and they have done so for many years. I don't see a reason for a city to prohibit a small flock of backyard chickens any more than there is a reason to ban keeping cats or dogs. So I fully support and request that the council consider an ordinance allowing ownership of backyard chickens, again, with appropriate limitations. I think the benefits of an ordinance such as that far outweigh the concerns that can be effectively managed with a proper ordinance and with community education. So thank you for considering my comment.
Thank you for your comments. All right, again, this is a public comment period of the meeting. If you do wish to speak, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or star nine on your phone and turn back to Clerk Beverly Smith for additional email comments.
So we had six other public comments that were submitted via email. A packet of these comments has been provided to city council. All of the comments pertain to the topic of chickens in Burlington city limits. These submitted comments will be included in our minutes. The public comments that were submitted were submitted by the following persons: Peter Oustash, 2324 Pepperidge Avenue in Burlington; Amanda Oustash, 2324 Pepperidge Avenue in Burlington; Jane Elder of Burlington; Leanna Giles, 1915 Sunnybrook Drive in Burlington; Debbie Johnson, 1806 Edgewood Avenue in Burlington; and Tracy Schladorne Harrison Drive in Burlington.
Very good. Thank you, Beverly.
You're welcome.
All right. Any further comments from folks attending the meeting? Please use the raise hand or star nine feature. All right, it looks like there are no further comments. So we will close the public hearing portion of our meeting at this time. Further comments regarding the chicken ordinance can be submitted using thepubliccomments@berlinconnc.gov email address or using the survey that's available on our city of Burlington website. So we appreciate that feedback as council looks further into this ordinance update. This time, we'll move to city council comments. Any comments from our city council? All right, I've got a couple of updates that I just wanted to fill in as we close the meeting. One is, yesterday evening, council received a proposal from staff regarding the CPAT, the Community Police Advisory Team. Did want to reiterate that we are looking for community feedback on that. It was built based on community feedback from a number of organizations and individuals. So folks who are interested in weighing in on that proposal can find the proposal online on the city of Burlington's website under our work session minutes and agenda. And you can submit your comments online. So we do look forward to that continuing discussion. And then I mentioned the backyard chicken survey is on the city of Burlington website and social media. We encourage you to use that to provide us with feedback. And we appreciate the folks from the Board of Elections attending today to provide us with an update on some of the changes and improvements to help keep people safe during 2020 election season. And I specifically want to thank our staff for helping work with them to secure the Elmira Community Center as a early voting location. And we want to reiterate their call for action for folks interested in being election workers. They need poll workers to help them staff those areas. And as you heard earlier, they are working to make sure that those workers are kept safe with proper PPE and other procedures. So if you are interested in helping serve our community as an election worker, please put in your application now. Also want to line up, tomorrow evening, we have a special ribbon cutting over at North Park's new pool. This is an invitation-only event, but it will be livestreamed at 6:30 PM on Facebook. And folks can tune in to see the ribbon cutting for the new pool. I'm very excited. I think our council shares that excitement. We did have to move this event because the weather later this week doesn't look like it's great pool weather. So we hope folks tune in for that. And also, there will be appointments available to see the pool and for swims afterwards and going forward. Also want to mention that October 3 will be the annual Almonds Pride Event. Look out for updates on the modified Almonds Pride Event in our community and how you can participate this year. And then lastly, we've we've heard a lot about City Gate Dream Center in East Burlington and North Church Street. They've been doing some amazing work, and they have recently kicked off a tutoring program for students to help them through these challenging educational times, and they are looking for tutors. So if you are interested in providing your skill set as tutors, I encourage you to reach out to the City Gate Dream Center and provide your your expertise. So that concludes my comments. Counsel, any other comments this evening? All right, well, we appreciate everyone this evening. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
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 Motion has been approved with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Thank you, everyone, for tuning in. A big thank you to our staff who make this possible every meeting. There's a lot of work behind the scenes to make this happen. So thank you, everyone, for joining us, and have a good evening.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Good night.
Good night.